Great. Good evening, Dan. Would you please leave an invocation for tonight's meeting?
Dan, you're gonna have to unmute yourself. I'm trying to unmute you, but it's not doing it. So you're gonna have to do it on your side.
So... Can you hear me now?
Yes, but we're getting some feedback.
Okay, how about that? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So council, with the dialogue going on in the nation, and I know that our culture and our society is very strong and that we have a great deal of concern and care for each other, but I want to give a prayer here by Billy Graham. And it touches a little bit about the way we need to think of ourselves in these times when there's so much that needs to be discussed. So let us pray. Our Father, in our God, we praise you for your goodness to our nation. Give us blessings far beyond what we deserve. Yet we know all is not right with America. We deeply need a moral and spiritual renewal to help us meet the many problems we face. Convict us of sin. Help us to turn to you in repentance and faith. Set our feet on the path of your righteousness and peace. We pray today for our nation's leaders. Give them the wisdom to know what is right and the courage to do it. You are sad, blessed as a nation whose God is the Lord. May this be a new era for America as we humble ourselves and acknowledge you alone as our Savior and Lord. This we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
And with that, I will call to order the Waschugle Regular City Council meeting for Monday, July 13, 2020. Would you rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. And with that, Rose, I will ask you to do the roll call.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Hi, Michelle. Councilmember Greenlee. Councilmember Yost. Councilmember Russell.
Here.
Councilmember Kutch.
Here.
Councilmember Suggs.
Here.
And Mayor Molly Coeson.
Here. Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, I actually do have one. So we have been working on our boards and commissions and new appointments to those. So I would like to move that from the end of the meeting to the beginning of the meeting so that the council can get to know any of the
I'll talk with you later about it.
... tonight of the meeting. Excuse me? And that we can ratify those volunteers for our boards and commissions. So I would ask for an approval or an amendment to the agenda for that.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to move the boards and commission appointments to, right now, this particular point in the meeting. Is there any discussion on this? So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? All right. So we do have a number of boards that have been appointments. We've had vacancies for quite a long time, and so I'm very pleased to say that right now we have for a vacancy on our cemetery board, we have Mark Rohr. You can see on our civil service board, I am recommending Quentin Harold. For a vacancy on our salary commission, I am recommending Teresa Stedman, and we still do have one open seat on that. And for our parks board, three vacancies, Kath Aldy, Barbara Baznet, and Corinne Lorch. So I would actually ask for any of those folks who are in attendance at our meeting tonight, if you would like to about your experience or your history or your passion with these, if you would do so now.
It looks like we have a hand up, Mayor.
All right. So I do see somebody. Samsung, if you could say a few words.
We need to unmute.
I think I have it unmuted now.
You do.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Barbara Baznet, and I have worked, I spent 30 years at the city of Vancouver working in finance department, budget, public works, the parks department. And now that I'm retired and live in the city of Waschugle, I just would find so much joy in being able to give back to my own community and be able to share the knowledge and background that I have. However, that's helpful for the city and being able to enjoy the parks. So important. I've got four grandchildren, and so just know the importance of the open space and the opportunity for people to get outdoors and enjoy. I don't, at this point, have a copy of your comprehensive plan. I looked at it online, but it was pretty long and lengthy to print, so I will pick up a copy of that when able. But yeah, whatever I can do to help, I just look forward to the opportunity. And thank you for the recommendation to be considered for an appointment.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi. Hi.
Former coworker.
I just want to thank you very much for volunteering for some of these boards and commissions. You guys, you all may not know, but some of these applications have been on file for us since maybe January or February. So things have been at a standstill. I'm not sure when we can go back to real board meetings, but we're gonna try our best. So is there anyone else who has been to fill a board or commission who would like to speak?
I see Mark Rohr's hands up.
Good evening, Mark. Go ahead.
You're muted, Mark.
Mark, you have to unmute yourself on your end.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
How about that? Is that already here now?
That works.
I've been on the planning commission for three years. I was on the mosquito board for three years. And I love the city of Waschugle. Paul knows that. And Molly's been around me for years. And I just want to be involved in the city, and I think it'd be fun to be on the graveyard board. And I really appreciate being nominated, and I hope you guys like me. You like me, Paul? There you go. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mark.
I would say we like people already who volunteer.
That's right.
Mark and I go way back. He replaced me on the mosquito control board.
So anyway, are there any other candidates or appointees that would like to speak at this point? With that, I will move to ask the council to ratify the list, the slate of boards and commissions.
The mayor asks unanimous consent that the slate of appointments to salary commission, public what, salary commission, parks board, cemetery board, and I forget the other one.
Sorry.
Parks, cemetery, civil service, and salary.
Civil service, that's the one I couldn't get. So I ask unanimous consent that they be approved.
Second.
All right.
Don't have to second.
Nope, you don't have to second it, but seeing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, council, so much. And with that, I will move right into the, well, I will say that any of you who are appointees now, you are welcome to leave the meeting, but we would certainly love to have you stay. With that, I will move to the first opportunity for public comments. So one who wishes to address the council, please raise your hand and do so now. And we will try and call on you in whatever order. So I do see Streeter. Please address the council.
Hello, this is Sean Streeter. Can you hear me?
We can.
Wait, okay. All right, can you hear me now?
We can, yeah.
I'm sorry I had my computer speakers outside dogging on the phone. Can you hear me now?
A little bit garbled, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't have very good internet service, even though I live only a little bit outside the Waschugle city boundary. The only internet I've got is a 4G connection. So my name is Sean Streeter. I live at 36861 Southeast Williams Road, Waschugle, Washington. I am not officially in city bounds, but I am a part of the Waschugle community. And submitted comments from my wife about the Waschugle pit gravel mining operation and an eight-inch water main that they are proposing to run to the site. I hope that some of you had an opportunity to review those comments. But what I wanted to talk about on this is that, you know, I have been a rather vocal critic of this illegal mine that has been running since 2017. And I am very concerned about this water line that they are talking about moving up there. As we know, the city of Waschugle does not have infinite water resources. Virtually every year, when I'm driving on 32nd Street, I see a sign that comes up and says, hey, we're trying to conserve water. Please do your part and help, right? Well, in looking at this mine, they want to bring an eight-inch water main up to the site. I don't know if you know this, but an eight-inch water main can flow 1,600 gallons of water per minute. They want to use this for washing rocks and for filling their water truck. Water trucks typically are 5,000 to 11,000 gallons. So at 1,600 gallons a minute, they could fill a water truck every three and a half to seven minutes off a flow like that. They also, in their site plan, which by the way is up for public comment through the 16th of this month with Clark County, Washington, on their site plan, they have indicated that they want to have 6.5 acres of water impounded on the site. And that is actually, I think, far less than what they're asking, they're willing to be doing because looking at their site plan, there's enough blue water spaces that is far more than 6.5 acres. But if you were to fill 6.5 acres, one foot deep, that would be an acre foot of water, that would take 2,118,034 gallons. If you were to take that amount of water and times it by 10 because the structures that they're proposing on building will impound at least 10 feet of water, and they have already built a structure that is well over 10 feet tall to impound water, you would be looking at 21 million gallons of water. I do not know how much water the city of Waschugle uses, but 21 million gallons seems to be a lot. I would also remind you that according to Waschugle city code, you are not allowed to extend water or sewer services to any parcel of land unless that parcel of land is going to be annexed by the city. According to public documents that we have been able to find on this, the city has no plans to annex this site. And so first off, I would say that it is a violation of your code to consider bringing water to this site because they are not on plans to annex unless you have some plans that have not been released to the public. But this site does not share a common border with the city of Waschugle. It would be outside of the border area because the border area is sunset view. This mine is accessed off of 356 Avenue. And I would also say that utilizing 21 million gallons of water or quite possibly more is going to stress a precious natural resource that is necessary for this community to have potable drinking water. And to use it to wash a bunch of rocks seems like an absolute waste of that resource. So that is the comment that I wanted to put out to the city leaders out there, and I appreciate you listening to me. If you would like to ask me any questions, I am happy to respond to them.
Mr. Streeter, I will say that the city staff has a lot of information it would like to follow up with you, probably off this particular platform tonight, but we do have a lot of other information. So I would hope that, you definitely have done a lot of homework on this, and I can hear your passion on this topic. And so we will follow up with you on this and fill you in, and I think we'll find some resolution to a number of the issues that you have. So thank you for your comments tonight.
Yes, thank you for listening to them, and I look forward to receiving more information on this topic.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Streeter. I see that
Thank you.
You're welcome. I see that Rachel Grease, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, has her hand up. Rachel, would you like to comment?
Yes, it's actually Grace. Rice.
Rice. Okay, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. So you can hear me fine?
We can.
So I am also commenting on the Waschugle pit. I did submit comments, but it wasn't until, I think, 5:30. So you may not have had a chance to read it. So I'm gonna read my comments. I kept it down to 300 words, so it is brief. But I wanted to give you the perspective of a resident living on 356th Avenue, which is the road that runs directly up to the mine. So I will read my narrative, and if I have any more time to make additional comments, I will. My family resides on 356th Avenue, half mile east of Jemtagard Middle School and Columbia River Gorge Elementary School. For two and a half years, our family has endured the illegal and unpermitted activity at the Waschugle pit, which is owned by the Zimberly family and operated by Nutter Corporation. Since October 2017, Nutter and Zimberly have repeatedly disregarded and ignored stop work orders from Clark County and National Scenic Gorge Commissioners and Executive Director. In July 2018, a fully loaded double trailer truck crashed into the railroad, halting train traffic for over eight hours. This occurred when 350 trucks were running daily. I will just comment that Nutter continued to run trucks that whole time. I don't know if any of you have been to that intersection, but as emergency vehicles were down there trying to make sure the driver was okay and get him out, trucks repeatedly were coming in and out. In July 2019, so last summer, Nutter Corporation illegally took up a mobile rock crusher and crushed enough rock to haul out for over a year. They're currently hauling it out still. When Clark County, at the request of neighbors, investigated, they found massive amounts of newly crushed rock. Despite a stop work order from Clark County, Nutter continues, today even, to haul this rock out for profit. Zimberly finally capitulated and applied for a conditional use and scenic gorge permit, which sounds like you have all seen. Their intention is to mine the resources until they are depleted. Nutter forecasts operating the mine Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with approximately 340 daily trips. And this is cited in the application very clearly. They also, along with that, said that the applicant requests for loading and hauling outside of normal hours of operation because of ongoing aggregate shortages facing Clark County. So they actually want to do more than 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 5:00 Saturday. This should be a major concern for any citizen of Waschugle because of the close proximity to two schools, as well as the bottleneck that it creates at the Highway 14 entrance and roundabouts, and as well as the additional traffic revisions related to the Steiger Walt project. Comments regarding the permit are due Thursday, July 16. Please include concerns that you may have and any adverse effects you have witnessed regarding pit operations. Thank you for your voice on behalf of the safety and peace of our community. And I have much more to say, but that is 300 words. So if you have any questions for me, we sit looking out at the road every day.
So I would say thank you, Rachel. You nailed it just at three minutes. So I really appreciate your brevity in that, but giving us definitely a lot to think about. I do appreciate folks that come to us on city council meetings to express concerns about issues that they've got within our community and even outside of our communities, such as this is, to some extent. I totally get it. So we do have a lot of information to share with you as well, and we will do that offline, just not tonight. So I do appreciate all of your comments. We understand this is a very big issue that's been going on for a long time. So thank you very much.
Molly?
Yes.
I was actually gonna bring this up during council comments. You know, I got the site plan notice as a, I'm within the vicinity, I guess, vicinity of it, which I'm pretty far away, but I'm surprised I got the notice. I don't think I came to my home address. I think I got it as a notice for, as a member of the general public. Dave, do we have any options here? I mean, do we have to provide them with water?
Counsel, I think it would be best for us, if we're going to engage in this conversation, to do it in an executive session. I communicated earlier
On what basis do we have the executive session?
Agency enforcement and potential litigation, and there's a long story.
Okay. I want to hear it. And the one concern I have is if the deadline to comment on this is in three days, or, which I think I heard, are we gonna miss any deadlines to protect our rights?
We intend to comment.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who wishes to address the council tonight? Seeing no hands raised, I will move to the consent agenda, which consists of three items. The workshop minutes of June 22, 2020, accounts payable of June 18 through July 2, 2020, and EFTs of March and April totaling $186,736.60 and payroll claims of June 30, 2020 totaling $483,383.85. And I'll turn it over to council.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. With that, we'll move to new business, resolution proposition designating council position number one as mayor, which is Agenda Bill 31, 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. This is a topic that you've discussed over several meetings, as you'll recall. The resolution, which placed the change in form of government proposition on the ballot, contained a second section that indicated it was the intent of the council at the time that if the change in form of government proposition passed, that a subsequent proposition identifying position number one on the council as mayor or chair is what the state code says, but it's the mayor, would be placed on the ballot. Now, of course, a sitting council can't bind a future council, but that intent was expressed at the time. I don't think I need to go through the different options that exist for how the mayor is selected. I think you're all pretty well-versed in that. And so the resolution that is in the packet makes recitals that narrates essentially what I just described. And it would place on the ballot in November a proposition that would ask the voters if they want to designate position number one as the chair, aka mayor. And the recommended action, if it's the council's desire, this is completely up to the council, of course, would be to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. I will just mention that position one is up again for the ballot in 2021. So if you were to place this on the ballot this year, and if it was to pass, the election in 2021 for position one would be an election for the mayor. And just for anyone who's listening, this does not change the role of the mayor in any way from its current role. It just changes how the community selects the mayor, whether it's through the council, which is the way it's done now, and it's chosen from among the council membership, or whether it would be directly by the voters and having position one be the mayoral position. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And now I will turn it over to council to make that motion.
Go ahead, Brett.
Madam Mayor, I move that we abolish my council position. No, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been passed and it's been passed and seconded, it's been moved and seconded to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Is there discussion on this topic? Making the mayor as position number one. Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote and ask for anyone supporting this to please say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay.
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 Motion carries five to two. Is that correct? I would say the names are Wagner and Greenlee.
Correct.
All right.
Would it be six to two?
Six to two, sorry.
The mayor's voting aye. I'm not sure if you're voting aye.
I am voting aye. Thank you very much. Our second is an ordinance amending WMC 3, creating a new affordable housing sales act, existing tax credit, Agenda Bill 32, 2020. But I'll turn it over to Manager Scott, correct?
That one is mine as well. Counsel, we reviewed this at your last meeting and at prior meetings as well. As you recall, the state legislature passed Substitute House Bill 1406 for an affordable and supportive housing and rental assistance sales tax credit program. And so the ordinance before you would establish that program in Waschugle. It's very important to note, this is not a new tax. This will not increase the rate of sales tax in Waschugle. What it would do rather is bring additional revenue to the city as a credit against the existing state sales tax. It's estimated to be a little under $15,000 a year, a little modest. It's estimated to be a little under $15,000 a year, a little modest amount, but it would help us and give us some flexibility in terms of supporting affordable and supportive housing and/or rental assistance in our community, and we could do that a number of ways. The mechanism in the code, if you read the actual language in the code, you might read that and think, oh, we're imposing a new tax. Well, you are, but it is a credit against the sales tax. I just want to make that clear again. And so the recommended action is to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Madam Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Is there a conversation on this topic? Councilmember Greenlee.
I just wanted to add one thing. It says specific use of the funds to be determined later, because the new revenue is only 14,500. Rental assistance program may be the most viable option. Another option, as I understand it, would be to make repairs to existing housing so that the current residents could stay in it. And so I just wanted to observe that that's another possibility. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenlee. Other conversation on this topic? Hearing none, I will ask for a vote. So all those in favor of Agenda Bill 32, 2020, amending the WMC, creating a new affordable housing sales tax, please say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye. Thank you, that passes eight to zero. It's our second time in the evening for public comments, so anyone who wishes to address the council, regardless of whether you've spoken to us before or not, please raise your hand, and we will get to you. So I see no one. Rose, do you see anyone else?
No, I see no hands raised, mayor.
Thank you. I'll move to reports and communications. City manager Scott, what do you have tonight?
Just very briefly, mayor, thank you. Obviously, we gave the COVID update extensively during the board session, sent an update to all of you, the typical city managers update about all of the other projects that aren't COVID, that are going on in the community, so I draw your attention to that. And we are starting to think about the legislative session that will be coming up in January and preparing ourselves for that. The context for that, still pretty unknown. However, the state level budget situation is pretty dire, I guess would be the word that I would use, as I reported to you previously. So there are a number of implications, but as always, we want to be prepared with transportation and capital budget projects that we want to advance into the system in the event that they are able to continue to provide funding for locals to build their communities. We'll be ready for that. So we're getting prepared for that. It's hard to believe it's already time to start doing that, and budget season is almost upon us, or it is, I would say, and some of those workshops will start in a couple months, basically. So things are still happening. It's not all COVID all day long, but it feels like it.
Got it, Dave?
That's it. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. So for my comments, I do have a few. I would say in the last few weeks, I've seen a huge uptick, at least for me, in the number of emails and voicemails that I get with people that have an issue. It may appear, I think it appears to some people that we are not open for business when in actuality we really are. So sometimes I'm the person that ends up directing them to code enforcement or the police station for carry, you know, concealed carry permits, or to a number of other issues. It seems like I get 10 or 12 a week now, people that want to know how they do things, and maybe with a complaint. And with that, I have to say that our council has done a great job. However, I would like to note that I think it's very important that we are extremely cautious, each one of us, in what we say to our community, because sometimes what we say can be with COVID and with things kind of shuttered at the moment, it can seem like we're making a statement for our community when actually we're just making a statement of our own personal policy. So I always try to remind myself, when I'm talking to people, to let them know that this is my own personal opinion, that it's not the opinion of the whole elected body, which is really the policymaker in our community. And so a word of caution to folks that we always have to be vigilant, especially now. I think it's pretty often that people feel disconnected and they kind of strike out to what they see as, what they perceive maybe as the establishment, although I don't think any one of us would consider ourselves as that. So just a word of caution. There is on Thursday mornings, a restaurant owners meeting. It started in Battleground, but it's, boy, it's gained a lot of momentum. And I think maybe Councilmember Yost can speak a little bit to that, if she has been a part of that routinely, but they've gotten a lot of good feedback from Washington Business Association, the Tourism Association, the restaurant owners, and just kind of folks that, like all the restaurants, and how do you handle a difficult situation, or how do you talk to somebody who doesn't want to mask up? So they are always open to any new businesses, especially restaurants, that would like to get information on that, and they have a great deal of legislative participation in that as well. So that's Thursday mornings. The, Anne McFarlane, who runs Jurassic Parliament, has a social justice webinar on Thursday. So I think that, for me, that's going to be pretty interesting. It's free, and anybody who has an interest in any of that, you know, in that particular area, please give me a call or contact me somehow by email, and I'd be happy to share that information with you. As we know, we received a letter from the president of LULAC recently, and city staff, as well as a lot of communities around southwest Washington, have been pulling together to find a way to address this whole issue. This particular issue with LULAC is talking about social injustice or racial injustice as a public health issue. I mean, I have no idea personally how we in Washego, uniquely in Washego, can address this topic, but I think collectively we can. And I would ask for consideration to authorize the mayor and city manager to work with other Clark County cities and the county on a letter requesting that the Board of Health examine the issue of race disparities in public health outcomes and make policy recommendations. So as that final ask for me tonight, I would have the council authorize that, if you would like me to.
I so authorize, I move that we so authorize the mayor to engage in the activity she discussed.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there a conversation on this particular issue? I mean, I think it's fairly important. We really need to be considerate in our response, so.
Well, and I think it's important to note, the city of Washego has very limited resources, and so it is an important issue, and we know that there's disparities being able to access, especially mental health, as well as, you know, other, other health issues. And it would have to come from, as far as the funds for that, and departments of health are at the county and state level. So yes, I'm in full agreement to authorize Mayor Costin and our city administrator to do so.
Thank you, councilmember. Any additional comments?
Yes, mayor, Ernie here. I think, I don't know, it might be important to include our chief of-
Looks like Ernie froze there.
Yeah. We lost Ernie.
Glitch out here, and Ernie's pretty close, so maybe that's what caused it.
Looks like the mayor froze too.
Yep. Uh-oh, Comcast is having an issue. Well, Councilmember Kutch, are you still live with us? Nope, I don't think so. Uh-oh. They all just dropped off. Okay.
We're in an essential services building now. I think I got a power backup, a generator going right now.
You have a power outage?
It blinked, it buzzed in the building, and then it kicked back on, so I don't know what happened.
Okay.
I'm up, but I'm in a different part of the state.
And it didn't affect you?
No.
Okay, Molly just let me know that it's a power outage that knocked or off the meeting.
Oh.
We have one, two, three, four council members, so we don't have a quorum, so we're not meeting right now, Ken, I would say.
We're in an inadvertent recess, I think is what you'd call that.
Yeah, so Brent's over there too, and he's communicating the same thing. So-
There's Brent.
Brent's back.
Now I think we have a quorum.
You're muted, Brent.
We do have a quorum.
Yep. Okay, so I'm trying to figure out who's presiding, having had to do this for a long time, with the mayor and the mayor pro tem out. I believe it is the, gosh, I want to say it's the chair of the public, well, I need-
Julie, it's the longest-serving council member.
Yeah, that's in our rules, right, Rose, I think? So-
So that would be Paul, right?
I think so. I think that's what it says. I just can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, we changed it from the chair of the Public Safety Committee. So does anyone else have comments? Alex?
Were we talking specifically about the letter? Is that where we're at?
Okay, Dave is nodding, yes.
There's a motion and a second.
There's the mayor back.
There's the mayor.
Mayor, I hand the gavel back to you.
Thank you. I apologize. I had, there was a power outage of some kind right here in our community, in my neighborhood, and everything, I heard beeping from all of my electronic devices, and it knocked everything off for just a few moments. So it took me a while to, to get back.
I'm back on the journey. Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. The only thing I was going to say is that maybe Chief Wendy would be a good part to add to that meeting with you and Dave. That's just a suggestion, nothing other than that. I think it'd be a good approach to have it, since they deal with the community a lot, but will I leave it to your expertise?
I believe Ray Kutch is back in the meeting.
The mayor's frozen again.
Okay.
I just wanted to kind of go along with what Julie said. As a city in Washington, we have no health department, and we have no expertise in health kind of issues. And so I think that our letter should say that, and Dave and I actually have discussed this, and so basically what it would say is, our city does not have a health department. We have no expertise or resources for that, and so we ask the county to weigh in. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember. So other discussion on this topic, Councilmember Kutch?
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but the letter, as my understanding, is going to be basically one that's being written by all the other communities. Is that not correct? So, you know, we're going with a united front in response to that. So I think that's, you know, we can't tailor it too much specifically to Washego, because we're acting as, you know, as a member of-
I have preliminary indications from other communities that they're fine with it.
Well, that's, they need to be a part of that.
Yeah. It's going to be coming from multiple communities, I suspect, at least four, if not more, and the theme of the things all of you have said will be couched in appropriate language that transcends individual community.
Thank you, Dave. Sorry, I kind of lost my place with this little power hit, so.
There's a motion and a second. Authorizing, as you-
Any further conversation?
Can you reiterate who the second was on that motion, please?
Me. I think I was.
Thank you.
So I would ask for approval to authorize the mayor and city manager to work with other Clark County cities and county on this letter. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, of course. And with that, I will turn it over to, thank you very much, I will turn it over to the rest of the council members' comments. And I have to say that now my, even audio and video are both just like very spotty now, so I don't know whether it's just a localized outage or whether it's more in general. But I'll turn it over to councilmembers for final comments. Councilmember Kutch?
I just want to say one thing regarding the resolution designating position one as the mayor's position. I voted for it tonight because I committed to vote for it when we initially talked about putting it on the ballot, and I agreed with that, that the city needed it, and I felt like we should give them the option. I'm not convinced that that's the right way to go, however, we would be the outlier for small communities. There's only one other community that has our form of government that does that, in my understanding, and that's Olympia. So, but I voted for it tonight because I committed to do that when we initially brought the resolution together. So I may, in fact, campaign against it, if I have any, if anybody asks me.
That sounds like you were against it before you were for it.
Hey, listen, I've been in this for three years. I'm learning something.
And of course, I've been against it from the beginning, so Ray, you and I may find some common ground here. So Ray, you and I may find some common ground here.
And you, and we're allowed to change our minds.
I just wanted to mention, we had an RTC meeting Tuesday. And there were two very good presentations on, we haven't had presentations for the past couple of months. It's been pure business. But we had a very good presentation from ODOT and WashDOT on what's going on with the I-5 replacement project. And we also had a very good presentation from the project manager to replace the bridge at Hood River. The Hood River project is about a tenth of what the I-5 project would cost. But both of those presentations are available in pretty good detail on CVTV, which you can either watch on Comcast cable or you can go to, I think it's cvtv.org and, and follow the RTC meeting. It's, there's not much business before the, the presentations start. So if, if you have any interest in those bridge projects, this, those are pretty good presentations. Other than that, I would just suggest in terms of legislature that as soon as the November elections are over, it would be useful to put together some kind of meeting with our legislative delegation before they go to Olympia. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenlee. Our council members wish to
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I was going to suggest that we form the Voter Guide Committee since it seems like we have people here for it and against it. I would like to volunteer to be on the four committee.
Sorry, this, I don't know what happened with this disruption, but my whole Zoom thing is just very fragmented right now. So I'm just trying to keep up. Okay, I heard Brent. Other comments on this? You'll be on the floor.
Ernie? Yes, I'm back on. I guess I'm okay. I just wanted to thank all those that have called and emailed me about the situation with my wife. The county has declared her free and clear of the virus. It was something that I wouldn't wish on anybody, even though I didn't have it. And I had still had to be quarantined because of her. But appreciate the calls and all the support and help that we got. Again, she is doing fine and I didn't have any problems. I, I would put food and water by her door at night. If it was gone in the morning, I knew she was fine and everything was okay. So, but appreciate everybody, especially Ray's wife Judy for taking a hard interest in Pat and helping her along, so thank you.
Pat was still telling him what to do from the bedroom.
Yes, yes, she was.
Great. Thank you, Ernie. Other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Yost?
Yeah, a couple of updates. I did just want to, I don't know that it's been mentioned yet, but I walk by City Hall all the time with my daughter and with my dog. And the paint looks really good. I, I miss the, what is it, somebody called the rusty can, I think, around chambers. And I noticed that they left, I hope they leave that little trim because it's a nice little homage to what once was. So I was a little nervous initially with all the like wacky colors, but it looks really, really good. And I'm looking forward one day to being inside the building instead of observing it. So shout out to the crew, whoever put that together. I am, as a business owner, in the process of filling out the temporary outdoor dining permit that was put together. It's a really simple document. It's really straightforward. Emailing back and forth, rapid fire with both Rob and Jessica last week. And they did an incredible job. We're all kind of putting our heads together, trying to figure out really good ways to be creative, but within the design standards and everything. So still a work in progress, but just definitely want to encourage anybody listening who's in a similar situation to go for it because staff is great. It's a really simple document and it could be beneficial to your business. Along that same note, just to speak to what Mayor Costa was talking about earlier, that individual, if you're interested in being involved, it's definitely restaurant oriented. I haven't been able to participate in any of the meetings for the roundtable because I'm cooking, but during that timeframe. But they have a pretty robust email list and they're always providing information. And it's really not all specifically restaurant related. It's, a lot of customer service businesses, I think, could benefit from what they provide. So I think you can email Eric Sawyer. It's E R I C dot A W Y E R, my dog's barking, so at M Y B B S I dot com. It's a Vancouver-based Barrett Business Services, and they're facilitating it. So information on that. Just a couple of other things, that campus Waschugle Rotary has a, they do have a PPE grant out for businesses in the community. They're awarding 25 of them. It just went live this weekend, I believe. And it's $100 and it's in a really simple form. Encourage anybody who needs PPE for their businesses, apply for that. And that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Yost. Anyone else wishing to give a report? So thank you very much, Council. Sorry for the delay.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Yes, Brent?
I, you know, I, you know, I made this suggestion about the committees. And I, you know, I think we have three council members on each side of the issue here. Why don't we just do that?
Okay.
I'm happy to be on the committee with you, Brent.
Okay.
For it, too.
I actually would like to postpone because there are a couple of other people that I would like to talk to.
Okay, that's fine.
That works for me, too.
Yeah, and this is Michelle. I just want to, hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome the new Parks Board members and let them know that I talked to our new Parks Director via email who expects a Zoom conference sometime in September. I'm hoping maybe we can get one even earlier than that. But right now it's set for September if any of them are out there and listening.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And I just want to thank the chief for sitting through all this.
Oh, speaking of which, Chief, I'm glad you reminded me that she's listening. She wanted to get a, a meeting of the Public Safety Committee together to discuss the Fourth of July experience.
Oh, yeah.
I would like to discuss when we can have that. Is the chief on here still online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I'm, I'm free pretty much, you know, I, you know, I'm working from home. I have some standing meetings. Tuesdays aren't good, but other than that, I'm pretty open.
I just want to chime in on the fireworks thing, too. I just recalling back to when that was passed to Safe and Sound, there were a lot of discussions on the fact that we wouldn't be able to police those fireworks as maybe some of the other council members wanted to. And we acknowledge, the people that wanted that rule acknowledged that. And, you know, that we weren't willing to take on significant costs in policing. I just wanted to point that out as you guys go into those discussions.
This is Ernie. I'm pretty much available as well anytime you set it up, Wendy.
Well, I'm, I'm not available anytime because I still have lots of clients. So if we did it, I do have time, four o'clock before our next city council workshop.
Okay, that's
That's not good for me.
Oh.
I thought you were available anytime, Ernie.
I am, but I thought we were going to have it this week.
Well, I'm completely booked this week and then I'm leaving to go out of town on Thursday. So, and I'm not back until the 24th.
Well, it's fine with me. Ernie, what would be, what would be a good time for you?
Well, I guess anytime then. Just schedule it and I should be there.
Other than four o'clock on, before our next council meeting?
Yes, I thought we'd have it sooner. I'd love to have it sooner, but
How about two? Two o'clock Thursday. I'll be out of town. Actually be driving.
When do you leave?
Thursday morning.
Can we have it Wednesday?
I'm completely booked with clients.
I don't think we need to put the council through all this.
How about tomorrow?
Tomorrow works.
I can, I can do anytime except one to two.
About 2:30 tomorrow. I, I'm, the problem is because I'm going out of town, I have like 10 clients every day. So I don't have any time this week. Or next week until the, until the 24th. I'll just email you all with some proposals. All right.
Hey, then.
Okay, that sounds like the plan. The thing is, we have completed the work of the city council tonight. We will adjourn. Our next meeting is Monday, 8/27. And our city council is adjourned. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.
Alex, Alex?